Good afternoon. We called the meeting of Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order, Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Moses, would you be so kind as to lead us in our invitation?
Yes, sir. Let's pray. Let's pray, gracious God, we thank you for this day and all your boundless blessings. We thank you for the rain that's going to come and replenish the earth. Father God, we pray for divine wisdom and insight for this body who's going to deliberate on business that's important for this community. We pray that you be with them and give them the wisdom and knowledge that they need. We continue to uplift those who may be suffering, Father God, and we thank you for all that you do for us on a daily basis. For us, in the name of Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Got to keep y'all tight. Thank you, Mr. Moses. Appreciate you, sir.
We get it right.
Proclamation EMS week, Ms. Crystal Hanson is here. We're going to ask some of her staff.
Good evening.
Hello.
We are here again celebrating National EMS Week, which will be starting next week. We have a list of donations that have come in from other hospitals that are supplying our service with lunches next week, as well as some things that myself and my deputy director are going to be putting together for them to have lunches. We'll be conducting raffles and we'll just be celebrating us all week.
Celebrate, celebrate, celebrate. Ms. Brown?
This is a proclamation, Liberty County Board of Commissioners, where emergency care begins EMS week, whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas in 1974 President Gerald Ford authorized EMS week to celebrate EMS practitioners and the important work they do in our nation's communities, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams with their career volunteer engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value in the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Service Week. Now therefore be it resolved that Liberty County Board of Commissioners declare the week of May 21st through 27th, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the EMS strong theme, "This is EMS: Caring for Our Communities," so declared on this 18th day of May, 2023.
Crystal, if you and Jean would come on for this.
Certainly appreciate what the EMS team does, Majority Red, all those people who make up that support and care, there's a lot of people. So, thank you, thank you all for what you do.
I can't do without you Patrick, so. I'm tired, man. I'm sorry. Run into the rain. Where's Karen? I can't. No, he ain't, ain't done. Oh, okay. All right. One. One, two, ready, smile. One, two, three, smile.
Thank you all very much.
Thank y'all for all your wonderful support.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
All right. One of our own has recently been appointed to the ACCG Board of Managers, if I have that right? Yes. Mr. Justin Frazier would congratulate him on his new position, so. Thank you for doing that, and thank you for representing Liberty County in that way.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have completed the county's March 2023 financial statements, and that's what I will be reporting on this evening. At the end of March, we have collected approximately 81% of our budgeted revenues for the year and have expended approximately 77%. We currently have 7.8 months of operating expense in our unreserved fund balance. This is up significantly from the previous month, which was only 4.6%. The reason for the increase is due to the continued receipt of property tax from the Tax Commissioner's Office. This time last year, pretty consistent, we reported 7.7 months. Looking at the departmental expenditures and the general fund, there are a few that are running slightly ahead of schedule. The Elections Department, as I have mentioned in previous months, is due to the purchase services for the voting hubs. The department as a whole is running a little ahead of schedule, but we do not expect them to exceed their budget for the year. Public information is showing over budget due to the service awards luncheon that we held back in December. This is related to increased food costs since we developed the budget. The General Admin Department is for the regional commissions dues, which are paid each year in July. There should be no additional expenses charged to this department, so it should not exceed budget for the year. Superior Court, this is actually a result of timing. The monthly payroll for April was paid out on March 31st, giving them another payroll expense in the month, and this was due to April 1st falling on a weekend, but we do not expect this department to exceed their budget for the year. The Bureau of Professional Standards, Department 3320, they're over budget currently for the replacement and purchase of radios, as well as for the LensLock Body Camera Contract. We will continue to monitor the Sheriff Department's budgets to see if any adjustments are needed before the end of the year. Jail operations is showing over budget for the month due to some repairs that were required to be made to the water and sewer lines. Additionally, the coroner is running slightly ahead of schedule, but we do not anticipate he will exceed his budget. Community Services showing a negative variance due to the annual wellness fair that we had back in October. We actually just got a reimbursement check from one of the insurance companies, so this will offset some of that variance, but we don't anticipate that it will go over budget. The Conservation Administration Department showing over a budget due to payments that are made in October each year for the Georgia Alabama Land Trust. No additional expenses will be paid out of this department. And other financing uses showing a large variance due to the county drawing down some of the 2022 bond funds that were issued last June. Since the bond funds were recorded in the general fund last fiscal year in 2022, at the very end, we are now showing the expenditure as these funds are drawn down in 2023. So far through March, we have drawn down approximately $1 million for the new EMS building, 3.1 million for Miller Park Fire Station, and $460,000 for the recycling center. We will continue to draw down on the bonds as the projects continue through December of '23, at which time the remaining bond proceeds will be dispersed to the county. Continuing on to Solid Waste, Solid Waste currently has a net income of $600,000. To date, we've collected 91% of budgeted revenues and have spent only 75% of budgeted expenditures. There are currently no departments within Solid Waste that are exceeding budgeted amounts. Additionally, we can say the same thing for the county's special revenue funds, none of these departments are showing over budget. Flipping over to the sales tax reports, our revenue for sales tax six for March was a little over $991,000. This was another good month, exceeding our original expectation of $778,000. At the end of March, we are 2.7 million ahead of schedule for the current fiscal year and 7.2 million ahead of schedule since the inception of SPOS. And as we know, the SPOS six ended, and we have received our final distribution, April, at the end of April. So next month, I will report the final SPOS revenue amounts, and then we will move on until SPOS seven. Continuing on to T-SPOS, we received over $900,000 again for the month of March, and to date we have collected 26.5 million. The T-SPOS continues to do great and has brought in over $860,000 in excess revenue from what was originally anticipated. And that concludes my report for March, unless you have any questions?
Questions for Ms. Samantha?
Not here.
Just look forward to those accounts that I run it over to.
Sir?
Recover.
Yes.
And the other thing, you know, I guess internally you all would adjust, i.e. the luncheon, the awards luncheon, so that was a little over, so we yield the staff to work that out.
Yes, absolutely. Before we do the end-of-the-year audit, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, the water and sewer line, is that completely due?
No, sir, it hadn't. I mean, we've given notice to proceed on it.
But it's, it shows, it's, um... In the narrative that it's unbudgeted, looking at the jail operation, it says it's...
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about a water system extension. I think they have been repairing portions of it, Mr. Walton, as they go along. I do want to check that we did have somebody allocated in ARPA for some of those repairs, and so I made a note for us to get together and look at those. I think it's in sections over there.
But we noted it up in the budget, didn't we?
We did, because there was some expenditures that were noted for water lines. Actually, I want to go back and check, right? May have gotten charged to there, may have supposed to have been in ARPA.
But we know that it's probably complete, or we've got an idea it's complete.
I think we've been put on notice that the jail's infrastructure is deteriorating by the...
By the day.
By the day, so it would be unexpected to see some more of those expenditures show up until at such time we're able to make the necessary repairs over there, but I think we had a very vivid report that the infrastructure over there is crumbling.
Was that inside or was it on the outside?
Inside.
It's that inside piping in the first section. It was done in '92.
Thank you, Ms. Sam.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
About it today. If my Commissioner Gillett...
He was still in city council. I know that, I don't know how Jeff made the dash as quick as he did, because he was there not long ago too, but he was still there, yes, sir.
So they were working along on the gum branch convenience center out there working, should be there until they get finished now. So that's...
Yes, ma'am.
And the asphalt's down at the trade port EMS building, that's looking good. Had a lot of trouble with water on that site as far as making soils wet. I will be trying to come to you at the regular meeting for a stormwater MPDS permit. We do several best management practices that we do for some of the municipalities, and what we need to do is renew those, because the permits renewing this year. So I want to come to you guys first, explain to you what we're doing for the other cities, and we've been doing these for the other cities for basically 20-plus years. So we just got to get a new intergovernmental agreement for it. So I'll have those, and we'll send those out to you for review before the meeting. Claudia Lane? Claudia Lane, I'm going to try to have those easement things that Joey needs by the end of next week. Limerick Road, Bill Carter Road is, the contractor's already at the contractor waiting on him. We'll talk a little bit more about the tree. Limerick Roads, the bids probably going to postpone opening the bids one week because they did have questions about the railroad and a couple of things. I want to give them time to make sure that they price those adequately. And the water system for Lewis Fraser Road, we've had a pre-construction conference and told the contractor to get going on that job. So he's, I know he's got materials ordered, so there'll be a little delay while we wait on materials to get here. The Davis Street, Select Street, that is Alan Hurst's job, but we did have the pre-construction conference yesterday for that. So they should start fixing that in about three weeks. So I'll open up to questions you may have about things we're working on.
Questions for Mr. Long, Mr. Stevens?
Trent, back to that Lewis Fraser Road and the Peacock Canal, you did say it was no way, they didn't want to acquire more land to
No, we have to require, we have to acquire
The county have to acquire
Yeah, we have to acquire the land. There's a small strip on either side that we need to acquire, but we can't, we're not released to go to right-of-way acquisition yet. So they have to get to a certain spot in the planned development process before they allow us to go for right-of-way acquisition.
So actually, roughly what we're looking at a year, right? Nine months?
Yes, sir. They usually give us about a year to do the acquisition.
So that road will be shut down?
Oh, no, 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 no. It's probably, as soon as we get the acquisition, they can move forward. But the, I don't remember the let date on this job, but I will find out what the let date is.
How much acquisition are we talking about?
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, so when they, they're doing the bridge, you know, you'd think that we have enough right-of-way because we have a ridge in there now. But the way that they're redoing the approaches and the side slopes, and so it's going to hit right at the edge of the right-of-way, so we have like a ten-foot strip. I can't, I think it's right at ten feet. It's not a very wide strip, just along the area that's impacted by the bridge that's in the wetlands that we got to get. And plus, that also allows us our access that we use to get down to maintain the canal.
But, but it will, I quit, okay, make sure my hand
Now, now, when the bridge gets, when the bridge goes into construction, yes, we'll close that section of the road down. So, and the reason I'm saying, said, I need to find out what the let date is, because that'll be an indication to you when to start expecting the bridge to be closed down. Let date is what we call our bid date. So they'll have a let date, and after that, usually about three months after that, the contractor gets started. And then they'll get out there and they'll tear the bridge down while they're waiting on the piles and the, all the new stuff to come in.
But it was no way of doing it like how they did one nineteen?
We're building on one side? I'm not sure what if, what happens. Do you have so many environmental hurdles there because of the wetlands that we're going through? And the stream buffers, it works better to go ahead and close it and, yes, sir.
Yes, yes.
It's painful for about six months, but, you know.
Notify the folk ahead of time so they'll be
Oh, yes, sir. We certainly will. We'll, we'll make sure we do plenty of advertising. We'll knock on Pats doorstep.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just was wanting to make sure, Mr. Long, that we are moving on Mary Todd.
We are moving on Mary Todd and, and
And Will Cemetery?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, Clinton hit me up on that yesterday.
He did, so, okay, all right. Okay, that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
And I know for Elm Street and One Haven Drive sidewalks, it's out for, for bid?
It is. It's out for bid. We had the pre-bid meeting Tuesday, so two days ago. I know we have at least one, Ty Swindell, that's bidding on the job. He's the same guy that's doing the sidewalks at Gil Park, and he's the same guy that did all the sidewalks for us all the way down one ninety six. He's really good at these sidewalks.
All right. And, and that bid closes when?
I'm sorry to understand you.
The bidding time for, for that project, it closes when?
It's at two o'clock on Thursday next week.
Okay, so that's
It's Thursday next? Hold on, I'll, I'll look and tell you. It's on my website.
All right. And, and just another question.
I don't have it stored in my mind, I'm sorry.
No problem. I, I know you get it to me. And then, Bill Carter Road, that, that company Platinum Pavings, have we used them in the past before?
We have not done a contract with them as far as Liberty County goes.
Okay.
I've done a couple of things with them in the past, mostly on private, but they're, they're very capable of doing this work.
Okay.
So.
That was just a new name that I'm not used to seeing on
They were, they were down there at the Dollar General, did the parking lot this week.
Oh, they were?
Did the walking trail at the complex?
Actually, a sub of the contractor is down there, Sockwork.
Yeah.
So, okay.
It was a different guy at the complex. But yeah, Ty Swindell's done a lot of sidewalk work for us over the years. All the ADA stuff he did for us at all the parks, so.
Talking about the parks, the bid is out on, or has already been one for Gil Park? Is all those sidewalks, the walking trails, done?
Yes, sir. He's, the sidewalks for Gil Park are under construction. As a matter of fact, he's probably more than halfway through. So he's already come down along Limerick Road, he's turned and gone up beside the dirt road, and I think he's making the curve to come around behind the basketball court now. So he's making good progress. So, I mean, we gave him a start, and his start date was last Monday, so he's knocking it on out.
Joey, the, the project at the complex, there's some fine tuning to be done around the track before, that's considered
Around, around the walking trail?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. He's back, the site contract, in fact, I was there today, he's already installed a little box for some drainage issues there, so they're back on working on that. When, when the site guy fully comes back to do the parking lot and curbing, he'll finish pouring the concrete while they're there, yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Government agreements for fire.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. How are you? I'm coming before you tonight for intergovernmental agreements with some of the municipalities here in Liberty County. Before I get started, I did send out an email letting y'all know about our class three graduation. Everybody should have a flyer. I would love for y'all to be in attendance for that. But moving into the intergovernmental agreements, this was talked at our workshop in regards to currently, as we sit now on a signed executed contract between the county and the city governments, select ones, they are currently contracted for sixteen thousand dollars a year to provide services to an unincorporated area around their city. It is unincorporated Liberty County area, but it is in what we call their fire district. With that, we are now, I'm requesting that instead of us do a sixteen thousand dollar a year annual, we go to a paid per call. This would be a hundred and seventy five dollars per call answered, as long as it meets the approved lists set forth by us. Reason for that is because we do have some municipalities throughout the county who are still running some calls that fire departments really can't handle, being psychiatric emergencies, tooth pain, things like that. So those we've cut out of what Liberty County Fire responds to, so there is an approved list. When I push that out to my staff, Mr. Brown does see it and I, you know, obviously afford him the opportunity to weigh in before it actually goes to the streets. But that's what the, the intergovernmental agreement is between, and the request for this is only to renew with the City of Waltherville and the City of Riceboro. Those would be the two municipalities that I'd be requesting for us to proceed with this intergovernmental agreement with. As well as, followed by that, I'm seeking permission to go approach all of the city municipalities excluding the City of Heinsville. Back way before my time, there was a gentleman's agreement, call it that, of a automatic aid, where if a primary fire district gets dispatched to a call and that district does not respond to it, the next neighboring fire department would be dispatched to go handle it. More and more now, we're finding with some of our municipalities, Liberty County is becoming the primary department to respond to those calls. We are leaving our primary district as county fire and going into city municipalities. So, and that's happening because of these automatic aid agreements. So my request to you tonight is to seek approval for me to issue a letter and meet with these fire chiefs and any city council that may, may need to be met with, to inform them that effective July first, twenty twenty three, we will be canceling any automatic aid agreement. Now, what this also does entail is if you need assistance, Liberty County Fire will come help. But currently, right now, on the west end of the county, Gun Branch Fire Station runs out to the City of Waltherville for a fire alarm. For me, I can't see why we are sending a fire department out of their primary, primary district through another city municipality through their fire district just to get to Waltherville. We're passing a fire station to go help another fire station. So we, just trying to bring more of a common sense to how we're operating and correcting some things that, as our department has grown and our service has grown, over the years drastically changing, it fits our current needs, so.
So that has been in place since the old days of the
The, the automatic aid agreement, yes, sir, the automatic aid agreement that I can, like I said, there's, there's nothing in writing that I'm aware of, but speaking with the former fire chief, James Ashdown, he recalls it all the way back in two thousand and eight. But once again, in two thousand and eight, City of, of Heinsville Fire Department was also responding more into the county area. You also only had a volunteer department. There's a lot that has changed since then, so.
And what year was that fire station on Airport Road structure put up? That was probably like two thousand and
Been there a while now, but
For the water tower, I could not tell you, Commissioner.
Late part of nineties.
You're moving in the right direction, because things, things have changed drastically since then. You're making
Yes, sir. And, and in this, like I said, those, those calls will be screened by my office. And upon approval, any discrepancies where there might be a disagreement between myself and the fire chief submitting the, the stipend payment, I guess you can call it, or reimbursement, I would default to Mr. Brown for clarity on how he wants to proceed with it, so.
So the one seventy five per call?
Yes, sir.
You're, you're asking us to approve that, that as part of the contract or not?
Yes, sir.
Is that two motions that he would need? One for the
Actually, I think just the, the second is kind of a procedural policy.
On meeting with them and, yeah, because we really didn't have anything in writing. It was just possibly a gentleman's agreement.
If we try to do motions and do stuff on every time we look at a policy change, just as a note, we want to let you know we'll be doing that, but it won't really affect any major incidents that will occur. So I think you just need to accept the intergovernmental agreement.
And that's what we discussed at our planning session, I do believe, and I think that's feasible. I think that one seventy five would be fair.
Yes, ma'am. And this is, so this is
Compared to the calls you're getting now, is it kind of
Yes, ma'am. So, and, and these calls, like I said, are only for, on average, about forty to fifty calls. When I go through the statistics and look is what they're running over the course of the last three years, that would be eligible for payment.
Okay.
This is not, I'll, I'll use Waltherville for example. Just because there is a call at the post office that falls inside their city limits, they would not be getting the hundred and seventy five dollars. It would have to be in the unincorporated area, being first, and to meet the call criteria set forth by Liberty County Fire.
Okay.
Have they, are they aware how you've changed your, changed what you react to, as you said you you, you, you upgraded, which you would respond to. So are they still doing theirs, the old-fashioned way?
Some are. I will tell you, the City of Waltherville responds to anything and everything, from an animal call to a headache, a tooth, an airplane crash, a train derailment, or a structure fire. They go to anything. City of Riceboro, I believe they are on the same course. Myself, for Liberty County Fire and Heinsville Fire, we have pulled back on select. Are we identical? No, we are not. But there's, there's just a need, I mean
They, they do. We started, we, you know, during, during the COVID episode especially, but also because of manpower, we changed our protocol to, to handle emergency calls, I mean, basically. And so they, they were made aware at the time. That's what we're doing. And so if they call for mutual aid on a call of one of those call types, we don't, we don't go to the cat in the tree, so to speak.
I think as much as we can synchronize services will be better for the citizens, otherwise folk are going to get confused.
Yes, kind of up to those departments, but
Good cop, bad cop kind of stuff going on out there.
I do agree with you, Chairman. The, the reasons, quick for us, why we pulled back is, we were seeing, obviously us being in the rural area, EMS has a much farther travel distance to us, to a lot of our areas. Once you get a fire truck on scene and you start patient care, regardless of the call type, that fire crew cannot leave that call until EMS shows up. So we never ran into it, but I did not want to run the game of Russian roulette of being out with a, a tooth pain call and a vehicle accident with entrapment or a structure fire call come out, and my crews can't leave that scene until EMS shows up. Our primary job in the fire service for you as the county commissioners is to protect structures and lives. EMS is, is to provide medical aid and emergency services to them. So we have no problem assisting EMS. We are definitely there to help them out. But there are just some things that we don't go to, and no different from EMS. They don't go to our fire alarms, so.
Have you had any preliminary discussion with the Riceboro and Waltherville about this proposal?
No, sir, we have not.
Chief, Chairman, okay, I understand the Riceboro, Waltherville. Let's say if something happens in the City of Midway.
Okay.
And Midway does not respond, the county comes in after EMS gets there on scene? Or are they in, let's say if it's entrapment? Let's say a deputy, someone who knows what they're looking at says it's entrapment.
Yes, sir.
How are we going to handle that?
So currently, actually, the City of Midway, we already are operating what I'm asking y'all to propose for Riceboro and Waltherville tonight. If it is a chest pains, respiratory distress, medical call inside the city limits of Midway, Midway gets dispatched, they don't respond. They will tone, normally dispatch currently will tone us and we have to advise them, Central, we will not respond until EMS gets on scene and advise if fire is needed. Those are for those type. Now, if it is anything with fire or vehicle accident inside the city limits, if they tone Midway Volunteer Fire Department and they don't respond, and they second tone for county fire to respond, we go right off the rip. There are certain criterias and certain call types that we will respond to, and those are the fire type calls, the entrapment calls, fire alarms. We just had one recently at a commercial complex inside the city of, of Midway that we had to go handle. So, I mean, it was right off the cuff. We just, we go.
But this is the first, we, I mean, first I've heard of it, of course, I mean, I live in the city, but it would appear to me that those commissioners that represent that may want to give the mayors and them one last time, along with the chairman, and say, hey, this is it. This is going to be drop-dead date here, and after that, you're going to have to understand that, you know, we're going to have to look after our own. I mean, I know you're making the decision, Brian, which is a business decision. you know, we're gonna have to look after our own, I mean, I know you're making the decision, Brian, which is a business decision, but again, we probably oughta, uh, err on the side of caution, I mean, that'd be strictly up to the chairman, whatever he wants to do, but Commissioner Stevens representing, you know, Midway and Riceboro.
And Walthiville.
And I think you have.
And Walthiville.
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, you want to try to get, let everybody there, I, I would think so, but, I mean, whatever the, those commissioners want to do, if y'all want to cut it off, we can cut it off, knot tie knot in it and go on, I don't care.
Yes, sir, and, and I, I guess, let me clarify on that real quick, so it's not that we're, we're cutting them off from anything, it's, they, they should be asking the next closest fire department because they're actually delaying that response. Um, at no point in time tonight will you hear me say, Walthiville, I will tell you by far is the best, uh, city that you're in contract with right now. They meet everything, uh, they exceed, like I said, they go to more calls than is on our authorized list. We haven't had any issues with them, they also have the least amount of county property. Um, Riceboro, uh, it's, it's up or down, I'll be honest with you, it's very up or down, um, depending on the time of the year. Um, but that's why we also got out of the contract with the city of Midway was because they were failing to meet the requirements of answering those calls. But Commissioner Walden, uh, absolutely, if, Chairman, if you would like to default and leave it to letting the commissioners talk to their respective districts.
It, yeah, suggestion that you accompany them so that you can explain the call protocol on that, I'd hate for them to.
Let's be careful.
Be there alone with a mayor, but I think the main thing, yeah, and it, and it really, it's really not going to change much from what's happening right now on calls. It really is not, there's, there's not going to be any calls we aren't going to go to, I mean, they're not going to be left out in the cold in Walthiville or anywhere. Uh, it's just that we, we, we need them to request that aid from the scene and simply just not, not show up. You know, they'll request that aid from the closest fire department, if that fire department needs help, they'll call us, we're going. Uh, and in the situations in Midway will be even a little bit different. Uh, the intergovernmental agreement doesn't affect any of that, the intergovernmental agreement writes by itself, it's simply changing the way that we reimburse them for the calls. And, and, and on that matter, the hundred and seventy-five dollars, uh, wasn't just out of the air, obviously, it's based on, uh, a service unit and manpower going, so we look back on the calls to see what they respond with to be able to get that hundred and seventy-five dollar average, so.
And absolutely, I thank you, the, those rates, that one seventy-five was actually comprised from the FEMA reimbursement schedule, um, that we go off of when it comes through with a hurricane, so that's where we pulled the data, and actually, they're getting slightly a little bit more to kind of say, hey, thanks for having the volunteers go to the call, so that's cost of the truck plus the personnel.
Chair, I got one more, this might be a little out of line, but Brian, since you're up here, we're talking about the volunteers.
Yes, sir.
We have two trucks at Midway.
Yes, sir.
One at.
Riceboro, yes, sir.
With the volunteers, they are not employees of the county.
Correct.
Right, but they are driving county equipment.
Correct.
Okay, where's the liability for all that, if something happens?
As far as the liability.
And who runs the, I know about four years ago, we did run a check, uh, like on license check.
So I will tell you for those three units, um, those three units, the insurance is through our VFIS policy. It's the same policy that currently covers all of your current rest of your fleet as well as your ambulances. Um, so those three vehicles are paid for out of the county for insurance. Um, as far as the liability, um, you know, you have Joe Schmo, the person driving the, the county, uh, engine that's inside the city of Midway and an accident happens, I, I could not answer of how the, the liability would take place.
So, so you're running their license check, I mean, you're, you're getting a list of their drivers, you were, so we're not doing that anymore?
I haven't, I believe the last time it was checked was when Director Hodges was here.
Uh, okay, so, Commissioner Stevens, we'll get a list of their drivers, they'll have to go through the same checks, we're fixing to start doing that yearly. So anybody that's not eligible would be off the driver's list, who are eligible to do those units. Um, I thought what you were fixing to ask was about those units. The other thing we will be doing is approaching the mayor, especially of, the, the units in Midway aren't in that good a shape, but the one in Riceboro we need uh, to fight rural fires, so in these conversations, we're also going to have that conversation about relocating that truck, that came up, I think, at the work session too. So that, we're going to approach about removing that truck, but we'll take care of both of those.
Okay, I just don't want nothing.
Well, so, so, you know, there, i- if it's under our insurance, obviously, they have a wreck, it's their fault. Uh, under certain conditions, you could come back against automobile policy or the, in this case, the VFIS policy. Really nothing we can do about that unless you just want to take those units out of their, you know, thing, which is certainly up to the commission. Um, and then, uh, they would also bear some responsibility on their personal liability, public liability with the city if it was an error made in judgment and not so much an at wreck and fault. So if they're out on the truck, they make a judgment in fighting the fire, obviously, the public officials liability kicks in versus automobile, but that's kind of how it would pan out.
Okay. A, a, a different question, when it comes to ISO ratings, is there's, is there some report that we can look at for Liberty County to see what, what those ratings are county, countywide?
Um, I don't know, I'll reach out to my ISO rep, Chairman, and I will, I'll get you an answer. Um, I believe so, but not that I have been made privy to.
One comment there is that, and I think we talked about this at, at the session also, is, um, on the ISO, i- if we're automatically responding, this is another reason for this change, if we're automatically responding inside those districts that are technically by state zoned to somebody else, i.e. Midway, uh, and we come out of our district to get that zone, it hurts our ISO rating for the unincorporated area. So just something you need to be aware of as we go forward, the whole fire in the cities and some of those things. So you, you suffer when you come out of your designated area automatically to offer that aid to those folks.
Well, I'm going to suggest that, maybe we are thinking about it, maybe we got so much going on, at some point in time that we set up a meeting with the, all the fire departments.
Okay.
And, and let's, let's work our way through all this.
We haven't done that in a while, yeah.
When, when was your target date of this, Brian?
So, so the current contracts expired June thirtieth, sir. Um, so this contract for the one seventy-five would go affect July first, and then accompanying that was the request for the cancellation of the automatic aid being July first as well, Commissioner.
And I don't think the second has to ride with the first, I don't, there's no need for the second to ride with the first.
I'm just saying, there's probably a lot of people that may be, you know, watching the night that's unsure, now you know what's gonna happen, I just, you know, I'm, I'm, always like to think we're gonna err on the side of caution and I, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be, um, you know, in favor of the intergovernment agreement, I like, I'd like to read it, but like I said, you know, I, I do have, the, the city of Flemington is looked after on, um, on the, um, on the Heinsville side, and of course, down on, um, on, um, Leroy Koffer Road there, back on this side of railroad track, it's handled out of, um, you know, the station either on eighty-four or it's gonna be handled out of the one, uh, off of Limerick, so, um, I mean, either way around it, I just think it would be just a courtesy, and if it's not, then, you know, people can vote on it tonight, whatever you want to do, Mr. Chairman, but I, I think we might want to, and I know Commissioner Stevens has been in it long enough to know that, um, worst thing you can do, you know, is make a bunch of people mad, and I don't want, I, I don't want to say that it's, it hurts my feelings to make them mad, I just want them to understand that, you know, we care about all of them, but we just can't, you know, we can't raise them all, we gotta do what we can do.
Yes, sir.
You know, I, my concern is that we do not alarm and, uh, confuse the people.
Correct, so with that said, Chairman, at the end of the day, regardless executing the, both of these or not, it's not changing the fire service provided by Liberty County. Um, the cities, are the cities, it does not change when it comes to fire and life safety. If there, if there is a fire alarm or a structure fire or a vehicle fire or an entrapment, I don't care what district it's in, and I say that respectfully to all of the cities here in Liberty County. Liberty County will respond regardless of whose district it's in and at any point in time. Um, this is just saying stuff a little bit different, giving them a little bit more guidelines of how they need to be requesting for aid.
Yes, sir, all right, so with, this is a, uh, we use with Walthiville and Riceboro.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, one seventy-five per call, Chairman, take a motion.
Chair, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion, everybody's clear, and we're gonna call that meeting big pow wow.
Okay.
All in favor, show of hands, please, thank you, motion passes.
Thank you very much for your time tonight, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Mr. Rigerson, Unified Development Ordinance, public hearing, Chairman, take a motion to go into public hearing.
I'll move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, show of hands, please.
Good evening, Chairman Lovett, members of the, uh, board. Uh, back in March, we came and presented each one of you a, a paper copy of this three hundred and fifty page document that we call the Unified Development Ordinance. And at that time, we asked you to allow us to advertise a public hearing, as the public hearing is required by the State Zoning Procedures Act in order to adopt a new zoning ordinance, and you gave us permission, as did all the other cities, and tonight, you're the seventh of eight public hearings that we've had in the, in the, in Liberty County this month. We only have Walthiville left, next, next Tuesday, and we will cover to everybody. All the hearings have gone well so far, we've gotten some positive feedback, uh, but we need to have your hearing tonight. Uh, I'm not going to go through the presentations that I did last time, but just for the benefit of, of those who didn't see the presentation, I think.
People struggle with it sometimes. Is that the same one?
Yeah, you'll just advance to the, advance toward the end, like the third from the last slide.
Third from the last.
Yeah, right there, okay, um, so, as I told you before, I just wanted to refresh you and, and everybody who might be watching here. Uh, this is a Unified Development Ordinance, uh, it's something that, uh, LCPC was charged with when we were created nearly twenty years ago to try to pull together Liberty County and all the cities together into one common set of development standards. We've done that, it's taken a long time, we've, we've been working on this for about four years to get this done, we've had a lot of stakeholder meetings, had input from business people, development people, uh, environmental groups, the Planning Commission had a series of workshops last year, and we are now ready to, uh, offer this for consideration for the county and our seven municipalities. Uh, your, your zoning ordinance and the city of Heinsville zoning ordinance and all the other smaller cities, uh, have evolved over the last fifty years, and they're all similar, but, but different. So this is an attempt to unify everything, we currently have thirty-one zoning, distinct zoning districts in the county, and, uh, with this, with this new ordinance, we have twenty that are common to everyone. And this is the menu of, of, uh, zones that would be available to you in all the cities in the county. Uh, you won't have all of these, but you, they're on your menu in case somebody comes in and asks, requests one of those zoning categories. So if you'll go to the next slide, this is a table that shows how, uh, when this is adopted, how, uh, your current zones, your current zones are over on the left-hand column, A one through DM one, uh, they would, uh, with, with the adoption of this ordinance or the enactment of this ordinance, everything would convert over to the column in the, in the right-hand side, and that goes from A one down to DM. One thing I'll point out, I think I pointed out at the last meeting, um, eight, more than eighty percent of, of the county is on, the unincorporated county is on A one and AR one. So those folks aren't going to see any change whatsoever, this, they're, they're, their zoning districts still going to be called the same, and they're still going to have the same regulations. The others will be called a different name, but we've, we've taken, we've gone to great lengths to ensure that this is neutral in terms of development rights. Nobody's losing any development rights and they're not really gaining any development rights. But, uh, in an, in an effort to unify this, we did have to change the names of some of the districts, so the new zoning districts that are provided for in this, in this document are in that right-hand column, so, uh, I just wanted to kind of remind you of that. So what we'd like to do is ask you to have this public hearing tonight and then allow us to come back next month, like we, we, we plan to do with all the cities and with, with a, an ordinance for you to consider adopting at, at your June meeting, which all, all we're asking you to do tonight is just have the public hearing and give folks a chance to come in and comment on it.
Yeah.
It's chair.
Yeah, now what he says, uh, R one on the former district and on the new district, how did you come up with the R twelve?
R twelve is a single-family, R, R one is your, I guess it's your most restrictive single-family district now, it, it requires a site-built home, it requires a, um, a minimum of, uh, twelve thousand square feet lot, so R twelve, R twelve correlates with twelve thousand square feet, so it's, it's the same lot, but we just cut, we're, instead of calling it R one, we call it R twelve, and that, and all the, all the jurisdictions would have a R twelve.
Okay.
So, so R, what, what you're allowed to do in R one today, you will be allowed to do, you, you will automatically be converted to R twelve, and you will be allowed the same, same, uh, permitted uses.
So R twelve and R eight carries the same.
Well, R eight is, is also a single-family residential district, but it allows a smaller lot, R eight allows an eight thousand square foot lot, R twelve requires a twelve thousand square foot lot. But R, R eight is, corresponds to your current R two, so if you're allowed, whatever you're allowed to do currently in R two, you'll be allowed to do in the R eight.
I, I was following you, but R two says two-family residential, R eight says single-family.
That's right, that's, uh, the, the, the R eights, the, um, that's, that's what it's called, it's currently called two-family residential, but it's predominantly for single-family residential, so the R eight would allow for, uh, single-family residential eight thousand square foot lots, if you wanted to do, um, if you go back to, go back one slide. If you wanted to do two-family going forward, it would need to be attached residential ATR, so if you're, 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 you can currently do a two-family, a duplex in, in R two, you'll have to get ATR in order to do a two-flamie, a two-family duplex in the future.
So, so still possible, I saw you carry out, no, I'm just, just a different classification.
It's a different classification, and one thing that this does, I will point out to you, that in, in the county, you, you will be allowed to have an accessory dwelling unit on your property, so if you've got a lot that's twelve thousand square feet or larger, you can have an accessory, you can call them a mother-in-law suite or a garage apartment or something, you can have that in this ordinance countywide, I mean, that would be, that would be allowed as an accessory dwelling unit if you have at least a twelve thousand square foot lot. If you have a smaller lot than that, then you wouldn't, wouldn't be able to do that.
Yeah, you know, I heard, there was an announcement made by, let me just say, a Realtor, that, uh, large parcels of land for subdivision in Heinsville are almost impossible to find.
Oh, yeah, they're flimsy now.
So it's going to push the growth out, so, are you, do we expect the, the builders to, to do the same size single-family residential lots out in the county, or are they doing the smaller? What are we seeing?
What, what we're seeing in the county at this point, the, that, our, our two biggest developers, our two biggest local developers are taking their, uh, their development models that they've been using in the urbanized area and, and doing that same thing out in the, uh, unincorporated county. And I'll give you an example, the one on Isle of White Road, that's, those are relatively small lots ranging from, um, five thousand square feet up to seven thousand square feet. And so that's the same footprint of, uh, subdivision that we see in, in the Heinsville area, and we got one of those going on Isle of White Road. And that's because Midway is providing them water and sewer, and they're able to get those lots that small because they have water and sewer.
But that won't be able to happen on Bill Carter Road.
You've already approved, uh, the zoning for the Bill Carter Road, so that will be what you've already, what you would have already approved, but, uh, it's on the menu. That, that developer or, or another developer can come in and ask you for a, a pod that allows for smaller lots, and if you're willing to approve that, if they've got water and sewer, then they can do that.
No, the only thing out there is just water.
Right, I guess economically, sorry, Commissioner, if I were a builder, I'd try to squeeze more houses in the smaller, smaller lots.
You would.
Then I'm also hearing that younger people are not, uh, favoring large lots.
Never have.
They just won't, it doesn't work. Ten by ten.
Gotta cut grass and all that.
Mr. Chairman, on the, the next slide you had over there, the, um, I guess, the different, the mobile home park, what is the size of those lots? MHP on the right-hand side?
Right.
Nothing changed.
R, R four is, is currently your zone for, uh, that allows for a manufactured home park, which is a planned development where one owner owns all the. which is a planned development where one owner owns all the property, and you, you rent the lot by the month. That would correlate over in the new ordinance with MHP, which is the same, same as your R4. So that's where, if somebody wanted to have a mobile home park.
Just rent the lot.
Right, with, with twenty unit, twenty spaces to rent in there, they would, they would be on, doing an R, MHP under the new ordinance.
Okay, but if he, if, if he owns the property, then does it go back to the R8 or R12?
It will. If, if they currently have a property that's, that's got a mobile home park on it, or that, that's currently zoned R4, it will automatically, with the adoption of this, it will automatically transfer into MHP, which will give them the same rights to continue that, that, that mobile home part they have won't, existing mobile home part won't become grandfathered or nonconforming. It'll be just as legal as it is now under R4.
Okay.
So it'll be an MHP whether Donald Lovett owns the entire park or, or Donald Lovett is just renting lots out?
Right.
Okay.
That's right. The, um, the, the S, the SMA, the S, I'm sorry, getting tongue-tied. The SFMH would be zoning that would allow for single-family manufactured homes. That would be considered, that would be comparable to your R2A that you currently have. So, um, you know, your R2A there would translate into single-family and like a, like you're own, you own your own mobile home on your own lot. But the other one, the MHP, is where you got a mobile home park, and you just rent out spaces or you rent out mobile homes to whoever wants to pay you the rent.
Isn't the general rule of thumb, a, a mobile home on half acre? What is it, half acre? Three-quarters acre?
Well, it's quarters.
So where is that on here?
That would be allowed in your R2. It would be allowed in R2A. Those are the, those are the two zones where you could have that.
And it depends on the size, it depends on whether you're on water sewer provided by municipal or whether you gotta have a septic tank, because you gotta have so much setback for the septic tank.
Oh, and I will point out that A1 and AR1 currently allow mobile homes, and they will continue to allow mobile homes.
Yeah. As we were talking earlier today in our last meeting, what about tiny homes?
Tiny homes would be.
What would tiny homes be?
Homes would be allowed in the new ordinance under, in your A1 and your AR1, and they would also be allowed in the planned developments. So, uh, you would have to, for anything other than just in the AR1 and the A1, you would have to specifically approve a tiny home community if somebody wanted to do something like that. You couldn't just go put up one without coming in and asking, getting approval from the Board of Commissioners or the city council as it is.
So that would be what, from the eight hundred to a thousand square foot?
Tiny homes would go down to, uh, you, you can have a tiny home.
Six hundred square foot, I think.
Um, I don't, I don't think it's six hundred square feet. I think it's maybe four hundred square feet.
Oh, I, I didn't think we had a tiny home, uh, ordinance yet.
We don't currently, but this, this provides for tiny homes.
Tiny homes.
All right.
That's right. So that, that is a, a change that this allows.
So the development in Midway, crossing Captain Jones, didn't that lady do a tiny home place for veterans?
In, in Midway?
Somewhere, I don't, I don't know where is that?
I, I think she.
They are out there, but they're just so tiny you can't see them.
A tiny home community. She's been talking about doing that, but I don't think she's actually executed that yet.
I saw something on the news that I thought was her development.
She, she did, she did get some publicity on the news, but I don't think she's made it very far with that development.
Might wanna take a run.
But, you know, this, this would provide the vehicle that they may be able to get that done.
You know how District One is, they sneak anything they can.
I think I saw them highlight a gentleman who was living.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm wrong, but you might wanna say that.
I think it's gonna be out there almost, um, breaking down road.
And I've seen some in other places that, uh, I couldn't tell whether they're tiny homes or just larger, um, storage sheds.
I wanna do some.
Mm-hmm. There's a fine line in there.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, my next question was, um, tiny homes is, is that like the mobile home that comes in on?
No.
They, they have to be like stick-built or whatever?
Built homes to meet the code for a tiny home. They, those, those things that are on the trailer are, are built as RVs. They, they're built according to the ANSI code, and they're not approved for permanent full-time living. So those would not be allowed, they wouldn't meet the requirements of the Building Department.
But you could, you could, you could purchase a tiny home.
You can.
At, at a mobile home sales lot.
Yes.
But those, you can't bring, I'm not talking about a camper.
Right.
Talking about the smaller trailer.
Delivering and set up?
If it either meets the HUD code or it meets the, the International Building Code, then yes, you, that, that, that would be a legal tiny home. But one that's built as an RV cannot be permanently lived in.
Okay, but th, those are out there, they're nice looking.
Well, maybe that's what they're gonna put in the back of them lots. You said they were mother-in-law suites. Maybe they were gonna put, drag one of them back there. I mean, that, you could put that on the.
It could be a detached accessory dwelling unit. It, it, it would be a subordinate use to your main house, but that, that could be done for anybody who has a twelve thousand square foot house.
You could put it back there and use it as storage or whatever.
To your house, or it can be detached in the, in the rear yard.
Hey, I'm just wanting a roof over everybody's head, not a tent.
Right.
That's right.
But I want them to be safe in that, in that home.
Well, I know, not a tarp.
Not a tarp.
I know where more tarps are in the woods right now than they are, they got it harbor freight. I've seen many blue tarps.
So you need us to give you, this is, I'm sorry, a public hearing?
Open up to anybody that wants to speak about it.
Anyone that always wanna speak on this unified development ordinance?
Well, it's called unified, I mean, is that just, it's really not unified yet because you hadn't got with who?
You, you and all the seven cities. Once, once, uh, everybody adopts it, then it would be, it'd be unified ordinance. You all would have the same ordinance. You'd have the same ordinance at Heinzville, Walterville, and Midway.
Why don't we just call it then the Liberty County Ordinance instead of the unified one?
We could, we can call it anything you want to. It's, 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 but the intent is to unify everybody's.
Kinda, I mean, I, I know you're, you're, you're talking with all the cities, but I just, um, I mean, you'll have people going to the Liberty County Planning Commission, and you're gonna explain to them the unified.
I don't hear any public participation, so, uh, we'll, Chair and Tana motion to come out in public here?
I'll move.
Second? All in favor? Now, just asked you here, so we need to approve this preliminary presentation tonight, Mr. Brown, or?
No, so we'll just put it back on the agenda for the mid-month.
For the mid-month meeting, I, I had to ask if you'll put it on the mid-month meeting because I gotta be in Riceboro on the, on, on your, the meet, the same night you meet the first meeting, so I can't be here then. But we're gonna, we're gonna go through eight, eight of these, uh, meetings again.
Hold around.
And I'd like to add, the, the ordinance we bring to you will, will, uh, make this effective on July the first. So every, everybody's, uh, this would be effective for everybody on July the first if it gets passed.
All right. Okay. Thank you for your work on this.
I have one more question, Mr. Chairman, before you move off of that, because I'm interested in getting people housing, but, um, the tiny homes, um, if someone, what would be the space like if you wanted to put a tiny home park in? What'd it be like? I mean, we have a quarter acre. Would it be a quarter acre they, per tiny home? Or do you have that written up in ordinance?
We don't.
You know, if we're, if we're approving this and you're saying tiny, this includes tiny homes, then what's the ordinance on how much acreage, if I just wanted to buy one or whomever wanna buy one, you weren't gonna put it on as a mother-in-law suite? How much property would you need to put that one tiny home on?
The, the tiny homes.
Is it real back to the mobile home?
As is written out, tiny homes are only allowed by right into A1 and the AR1. So A1 requires an acre. AR1 requires thirty thousand square feet. So those are the ones where it'd be allowed by right. Any other kind of tiny home development or community, like you're talking about where you have a bunch of them, would have to be a planned development, and that would be approved by you all. And it would be determined on whether they got water and sewer, which if, if you're gonna have something that, that many on a, on a small lot, you're gonna have to have water and sewer. But that would be approved on a case-by-case basis, like, by you, like puts. Like sometimes a putt will come in and they'll ask for, um, you know, you know, six units to the acre or, or maybe five units to the acre. That's, that's, that's approved by you on a case-by-case basis. So for a plant, for a planned pu, uh, planned tiny home community, it would be, they would have to, to draw up their development standards, and you would have to approve those.
Okay.
Picking back into the, so, so, so this plan right now, once approved, would cover?
It, it would, it would provide the process for you to consider that tiny home community.
Okay. All right. Good.
And you got this model on the tiny homes. Where, where have you, I mean, where we look?
Could you tell us where we can see this model at anywhere that you know of, Jeff? They've already got one in.
There's one on Wheaton Street.
And one at Altam Avenue, I believe, in Brunswick.
Brunswick, right by the school.
That's right. There's, yeah, there, there, those are the two I know about.
They're in the city of Brunswick, one in Savannah.
Behind the, uh, the church and going into Harris Neck on the right down in McIntosh County. When you turn left like you're going into Harris Neck, there's a church right there. There's a bunch of them stacked in there, and that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
They were building them there and then taking them from.
Oh, is that what they're doing?
That's right, that's right. They were building them. Yeah, and then, yeah, they were doing, it was, uh, yeah. They, they, they built the ones for the residents down in.
And I think those were the eight hundred to a thousand square feet one that they were building right there on Seventeen.
We're gonna be overrun with tiny homes, but this does provide a mechanism for y'all to approve them if you want to.
Well, you know, I, Commissioner Thum, I was talking, I think I've seen some in the county.
Yeah. Well, your ordinance currently allows, uh, someone to live in a three hundred square foot dwelling. So if, if you can meet, if you can meet the building code, you can have a, a dwelling that's three hundred square feet. So tiny homes are already allowed.
Those are two different things, I think, we're, we're discussing. We're discussing more of a in-law suite or a doghouse suite for some of us. Or, or, like you said, a, a planned unit development.
A planned community of small.
Right, 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 yeah. And, you know, we have seen like one or two.
I've seen so.
But as a, as a plan, because I know you and I have, have had, you know, lengthy discussions about, about that as well. So those are two different things. But I, I do know that people are interested in doing, uh, some type of planned community with tiny homes. I mean, not just here, but all throughout America because of, I mean, it's a housing shortage everywhere, you know? And not just a housing shortage, but more importantly, I mean, whenever you look at the, the, uh, the amount of people who are, are homeless.
Homeless and vets.
You know, that, that's, that's a real thing, you know, everywhere, especially in Heinzville. If you don't, if you don't believe, just come with me. I, I can show you where some at real quick. But, uh, more importantly, so I, I do think we do, not just for Liberty County, but, you know, all the municipalities do need to have that.
Have it on their mind.
A man on the radar like yesterday. So even when it, when we get the first one, we all be uniform and like they say in the band.
Now, all of this will be passed down, uh, in the, in the outlined areas. You'll have, I mean, Mr. Zekman's department would, would know about these type of situations ahead of time.
Yeah, they'll have to come in and get a permit.
He'll not have any issue with, you know, if the person gonna put their trailer pole up and, and hook electricity up and stuff like that to it. Because I, you know, things like this will happen. I mean, things like the, you know, we're talking about during, uh, time of need, the disaster type area. If you had to pull forty of them in somewhere and leave them, we wanna make sure that, you know, we don't have somebody raising cane about it because it don't meet this code and that code. But if it's in this, what you're saying, and it can go in a certain area, that's one thing. But, you know, like Commissioner Thrift said, if you've got a place that's a, a field in front of a church that's wide open, that you could put fifteen in to help those people that, uh, you know, are in need, then, you know, we need to be able to, to, um, have that in a, along in that ordinance that the, the inspections Department will work with them on that.
Right. This gives you the ability to approve that overall concept, but then Paul's office would have to go out and inspect them to make sure that they meet the codes.
But y'all have done talk, you and.
We have. He's, he's aware of this.
That's great. That's, wanna make sure all eyes is dotted.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Jeff.
Thank you.
See you on the next round. Care, care update, Miss Tammy Mims?
Oh, I feel sick.
Thank you. Thank you.
When I was at the hospital, I looked for you.
Well, I was probably running the halls. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come before you tonight. Um, I'm not gonna keep you long. I was gonna say good afternoon, but it's after six, so I'll say good evening, right? So, um, if you go to the next slide. So, um, we, you know, the public health emergency has been, um, no longer as of, of the eleventh. But I thought I'd come and just give you some quick facts, um, just some hospital quick facts. There's a hundred and eighty-two total hospitals. This is the state of Georgia. There's thirty critical access hospitals, which Liberty County is one of those. A hundred and four of our hundred and fifty-nine counties have a hospital. So that means there's a lot of counties out there that don't even have a hospital. We've had seventeen hospital closures since, um, twenty thirteen, and most of those were in the rural areas. And then forty-two percent of hospitals as of last year's in twenty twenty-two are operating in losses. So we've had a lot of expenses with the pandemic. Um, and a lot of that, um, you know, was within our salaries of having a lot of agency, uh, internal contracts, a lot of workforce components within that. And we continue to pay excessiveness on supplies. A lot of the supplies, um, the prices went way up during the pandemic and unfortunately have not seen their way down. So just real quick to give you a quick reminder, because I wanna make sure that, um, you know, we are in an underserved area, even with, um, um, primary care. We're fortunate enough to have our Liberty Family Medicine with Dr. Bedea, Dr. Speltz, Rebecca Shaver, our PA, and then Danielle Elam. However, you know, we've lost a, a local, uh, primary care physician, Dr. Sobwali, recently from the community. And we are still, um, you know, continue to try to recruit and fill those primary care needs. We do have our primary care, uh, practice in Midway with Dr. Procure, and then Lisa Cruz, the nurse practitioner. And then we've opened up our walk-in clinic several years ago. We're looking at expanding those hours in the near future, trying to still get people that are, um, non-emergent into the walk-in clinic, um, no need for an appointment, uh, and to try to unclog our emergency room. So we've had a very successful walk-in, uh, clinic. Soon as we're able to hire some additional staff, we'll be able to extend those, um, extend those hours. We're very fortunate to, um, still have our specialty. We have Liberty OBGYN. Dr. Borquay, in case you're here, in July, will partially retire. Uh, he's been with us for over twenty years delivering, uh, babies in this county. Uh, we've had a long relationship with him. We're gonna change our model to where we'll have four physicians. They will work a week a month, and so they'll rotate through. Um, and so we'll have a different, um, model for our Liberty OBGYN, but we'll continue to, um, deliver babies and take care of, um, our moms in that manner. And then Laura McKay is a new nurse practitioner that's full-time in our practice, and she will, um, be able to, of course, see everyone as well. We have our Liberty Surgical Associates with Dr. Kofield Floyd and Dr. McCain. And then also, you remember, we've partnered with St. Joseph's Chandler for our oncology services. And that has, uh, really expanded, and we've expanded the days and coverage there. Unfortunately, have a, a great need for oncology, um, in the county. And also cardiology practice. We've expanded the hours of that. Cardiology continues to grow, um, uh, for, uh, the county as well. So as we continue to respond to the needs within the specialty area, we're fortunate enough to make those arrangements. Um, the other item is our nursing home that we're very proud of in Coastal Manor. They've been, uh, very fortunate to continue to deliver, uh, the care to the, um, the residents in the, um, nursing home. Fortunate enough now that people can come in and visit again, and that's been a huge relief. It's been very, very difficult on the residents, family members, of not being able to come in and, uh, have the activities that, um, they're used to. So, um, they actually had a day of Las Vegas, uh, yesterday. So this is Nursing Home Week. Last week, we celebrated, um, Healthcare Personnel Week, and as EMS has their week next week, it's kinda hit all, uh, healthcare. Um, and so they're, uh, having a, a good time at the nursing home. So some major accomplishments, um, from last year. So we were awarded the Rural Stabilization Grant for our perinatal program. Several people came out for our Moms' Heart Matters. You know, there's actually another report that just came out this week. Georgia continues to be one of the worst states for maternal mortality. That means our moms are dying unnecessarily after birth. So we have developed a program to address that, um, and, um, hopefully be able to, we've gotten the state's attention, uh, for that program. And we'll be writing, um, some, um, papers and, uh, trying to implement different protocols. and, uh, trying to implement different protocols throughout other hospitals, um, to demonstrate our success. We, uh, were, um, able to get some of the Best of Liberty Awards, so we have to give a great shout out to Dr. Borquay and Dr. Speltz and our Long-Term Care, um, Coastal Manor. Uh, we've talked about Laura McKay, new OBGYN, which is a huge, huge, um, success to be able to recruit OBGYN to the area. And then actually Liberty Regional received, uh, the Performance Related Employment and Management and Engagement from the State Office of Rural Health. So every year, they recognize the top five, uh, performing critical access hospitals, and we were able, um, to receive that, uh, award last year. Every year, the Georgia Hospital Association does an economic impact to say what are the payroll and benefits from the organization and also the full-time equivalent jobs at that time, and then the revenue for both local and state economy. And you can see, uh, the hundred and seven million that we bring for both local and state economy of, of having a, a, a healthcare system in the area. We also have our challenges. Uh, we've talked a little bit about workforce. That's probably been every healthcare and other industries, even restaurants you still see having opened up, you know. I guess everybody's now trying to find what's our new normal going to be. So we've done well. We, uh, have not shut down services like others. We do not call diversion, uh, and, uh, to deter, uh, you know, our EMS. Uh, we try to, uh, take care of our county and accept everything that, uh, comes to us. Uh, we continue to have the regulatory burdens. As much as the waivers now have, uh, gone away, uh, we still have more and more regulatory burdens of just reporting and, um, some other, um, crossing the Ts and dotting the Is that we, um, have to do. We continue to look at our market share and look at the outmigration. What services are people going out of the county for? Where are they getting those services? And then do we offer those services to be able to educate the public that we have those services, um, here? Uh, we are still, um, appealing the freestanding emergency department that, um, uh, HCA in Savannah is trying to put in Bryan County. Uh, we serve a lot of people from Bryan County. They come to our county. It's an easier traffic flow sometimes to us versus going to in-town Savannah. Uh, and so we still are in that appeal of that freestanding emergency department. Um, there's continued to be legislative updates, unfortunately. Some of our healthcare, um, laws, uh, last year got caught up in some other items, and, uh, we weren't successful in getting some things passed as, uh, we were hoping to. So we'll work again on that. Uh, we've got a couple of workforce, um, um, challenges that we're looking at with the group. Also, the certificate of need is up for discussion. And so we have, uh, groups that are working on that over the summer to be ready for the next legislative, um, session. And then we still have our supply availability challenges. They're still, uh, slow in production of some things, and, uh, we're having to look for other sources of, of some items. But things are seeming to get a little bit better and improve, um, um, currently. If you look at the overall financial comparison, this is really what we, um, bring before you with our indigent and charity care, the bad debt and the debt service. And you can see where we ended twenty twenty-two, um, with the number. It continues to grow. A lot of that is, um, you know, the, all the services that we give, um, you know, and, and continue to not get, um, paid for. And then our needs, our overall needs, we continue every day looking at staffing. Uh, so we've done very well. Uh, the, our, uh, biggest concern is the overall cost of it, and that's where financially it's really, uh, hitting us. And then we continue to look at our major capital items. Um, we need some new roofing in some areas. Our medical, um, air system has to be, um, updated and improved. Generators and then also new equipment, um, that then things go out of, um, life and, uh, have to be, uh, replaced. We completed our Community Health Needs Assessment the end of last year. Um, and you see, uh, the items that ranked. We are really focusing on diabetes. If you look at the overall numbers for our county, uh, diabetes, um, is really causing a lot of issues for, um, the community, and so you'll see a lot of programs in place, um, for diabetics in the near future. Our Rural Health, the Georgia, um, Heart Tax Credit. I'm gonna leave with Joey. Applications, uh, for everyone. Please consider if you have a, um, paycheck and you pay, um, Georgia taxes. Uh, we're fortunate enough that the state says each rural hospital that's eligible, and Liberty is one, we can get up to four million dollars of state funds. So I'm sure every commissioner in here, if you hear the state will give us four million dollars, we figure out how to get a hold of that, right? We can get two million dollars from individuals and two million dollars from, um, um, other, um, companies. And so we're very fortunate to have, um, one of, uh, Maris Bank gave us a large donation, um, just recently. Uh, we have individuals that are given. So I take my paycheck from last year and see how much Georgia tax, and then I give the maximum that I can give, because I'd rather my money stay here in Heinzville than go to Atlanta, Georgia, right? And so I'm sure, um, y'all feel, um, the same. But they've, they've passed the law and extended the program to twenty twenty-six. Uh, it has increased to seventy-five million for those hospitals that are eligible. We asked for it to go to a hundred million. They did not pass that this past year, um, but they did extend it. So we, uh, we do have it through twenty twenty-six. So, um, you are taxpayers in the area, can sign up, and I'll leave these, uh, with Joey. But beginning July first, you can give, um, unlimited to your maximum. So if you look on your check, and, um, individuals can give five thousand. Uh, married and filing taxes jointly can give up to ten thousand. After July first, if you have more taxes than that, you can give to the maximum of your tax, um, benefit. So please, uh, take that opportunity. The next slide is to look at our future plans. Recruitment, we continue to look for providers. We need to get more primary care. We have got to have access for care. We have got to, um, continue to recruit for staff. Uh, we compete with, um, a lot of people, um, leaving, um, you know, to go to Savannah. Uh, some people think bigger is, is better. And, um, I, I worked in bigger for a long time, and I will tell you, it's, it's a total different, uh, work environment. And, um, once I fell in love with, uh, rural healthcare, there's really, uh, nothing like it. Uh, so hopefully we can, uh, we're getting into the schools and trying to retain some of our students. There's tons of programs out there, so we'll continue to, uh, recruit not only for staff, but also providers. Uh, we have, uh, received permission from our hospital authority to open up a wound care center, and that's gonna be a major program for our diabetics. So we have a lot of diabetes that are not getting treated. They end up losing, um, sometimes limbs, uh, because their wounds do not heal. And so we're very fortunate that, um, we're able to, um, um, work on that and have our own wound care center. And then if you seen, um, uh, right next to the hospital, we had an old house that we had on the market for a long time. Couldn't get it sold, so we've had it taken down. And we are going to, uh, build a call house. And so our, um, physicians that come and visit and they're on call, uh, instead of staying at a hotel for a week long, they'll, they'll be at a call house. Be a little bit more comfortable, and they'll be right there on the grounds of the hospital to be able to respond. We think that'll attract maybe some more people, so if you've got to stay somewhere for a week, living at a hotel, sometimes not the most desirable. So we think that will, um, encourage, um, and be a, a little bit better environment. And then last but not least is mental health. So, um, I'm working on a work group with, um, you know, the, um, the jails are overwhelmed with mental health. A hospital is, and we have really looked at and worked with, um, a lot of the outpatient centers. So we are really lacking for an inpatient center. So we, uh, don't have any capability locally to take care of those, and we are at everybody's beck and call to beg them to take care of our mental health, um, uh, patients. So, uh, we will, uh, think at the, um, annual county meeting, uh, I know mental health will be, uh, for an update. We had the mid-year. Um, we think we know what the needs are. We just have to find the funds. And so we're gonna keep looking for those. There's some grants out there and also some, um, opportunity. We have the land, uh, and, um, we'd be able to recruit and open up a service, hopefully, and then be able to have all of those components that our county needs. And then last but not least, thank you for your continued support. Uh, it takes a village, as they say, absolutely. This has been a tough, uh, last three years, for sure. Um, when we got the phone call in March of twenty twenty, who, who would have thought, right, of a pandemic? But I think, um, the local, um, hospital has done a great job. Uh, we have taken care of many and saved, uh, many a lives. Um, you know, we continue. Last year, we saw almost thirty thousand people in our emergency department. So thirty thousand patients, that means bring, if you bring one or two people. So almost a hundred thousand people come through our emergency department in, um, a, a year. And so we're doing the very best we can with the rooms that we have. We have implemented a, a patient advocacy program where it'll be customer service, so we'll be able to check on our patients more often, but also communicate with their family members. Because a lot of times the family members are very anxious, uh, they don't know what's going on with their loved one. And so we're gonna, um, start, uh, touching those family members a little bit more often. And I think that patient advocacy, customer service program will help us a lot. And I think, um, um, hopefully extending the hours of the, uh, walk-in clinic, then we can get some of that unnecessary volume out of the emergency room and be able to treat the emergent as needed. And with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Mr. Mayor, I have just one question. Ms. Mims, Ms., uh, Dr. McKay, she will be in Dr. Um, Borquay's office all through the month? Is that correct? And then the other doctors will just be at the hospital? Is that right? She'll be seeing the patients?
So, um, she's.
Were there appointments?
Yes, she's, yes. So the doctors will rotate through the clinic as, uh, as well.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Through the clinic and at the hospital.
And then they will be on call for the hospital, but she'll be the consistent at the practice. So like today, Dr. Borquay has a surgical day, so he, he doesn't see patients in the office on Tuesday because he's in surgery. So these doctors will have the same exact schedule. It'll just be a doc, a different doctor each week.
Oh, okay.
But Laura McKay will be at the office Monday through Friday.
And these doctors will be at the hospital or on call for deliveries?
Mm-hmm, for deliveries, and they'll see, um, patients in the clinic.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am. So it's Dr. Callens that she comes now. She comes from, um, Macon. Uh, Dr. Quarantine, he comes from Albany. Um, we're recruiting another doctor. She's not signed her contract yet, but she has it, and she verbally says she will. So we'll announce her when she does, and then Dr. Borquay will be still with us for seven days.
And I don't know, you know, when we get ready to build the call house, you know, uh, Reevesville just built four over there, over in Reevesville for Optum, I believe.
Yes, ma'am.
They built, they're almost as tiny house. But they have all the amenities, they say, that you would need.
We'll have to go check it out and look at it.
I mean, excuse me, bigger than the hotel rooms.
Right.
So you might want to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go and, and look and, um.
I think they put four up, four or five, right there on the right-hand side going into Reevesville.
I'll go take a look at it. Yep. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair. Ms. Mills, on your physicians that you do have, what are the ones that you're mainly short? I'm gonna say short of that you, we don't have in Liberty County.
So we, if you look at the statistics, we are short still primary care. There's, there's too much population for the number of doctors that we have for them to be seen timely. So if someone calls, they're still having to wait too long to be seen. I think that's why our emergency department is so flooded, because people can't get into their doctor's office. So the statistics from the state show that we're still underserved in primary care. So we're gonna continue to recruit. We, we have nurses that are going to nurse practitioner school. They'll graduate in March. No, January. They'll finish in January. And so we're looking to then hire them and put them through, you know, some of our practices to try to expand. The other is some of the specialties. So we have doctors that are visiting doctors, and they might come once a month. And our volume is just too, too much for that. We need them more often. So we lease them space in our medical office building. Cardiology, we have four days a week. We could probably use him five days a week because there's so much cardiology issues. Um, nephrology for kidneys. We have a lot of people that are on dialysis that need to be seen. So a lot of the pulmonology, so we have that, you know, with Dr. Wumi comes up, you know, every now and then. So most of those, the population is just, um, so large. And unfortunately, the conditions, uh, those are chronic conditions that are pulmonology with lung disease and cardiology. The diabetes is tremendous as well.
Well, I guess, so that can, helps to contribute to our transfer out because we don't have the specialty.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Here.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And so then we don't have the services to take care of them, so you can't accept them then. Yes, sir. So one thing we are going to review is telemedicine. So there is opportunity to then have, um, where you can have telemedicine, and they can then view the patient from the computer. We did a lot of telemedicine during the pandemic, and so they're still keeping those, um, you know, capabilities out there. A lot of people would rather go to their computer screen and see their doctor instead of having to go and, you know, get a babysitter and, you know, go see your, um, doctor. And so actually, there's some specialists that you can sign up for and maybe. And so we're gonna look at what, what are those specialties that we're seeing that we're having to transfer out because we don't have enough here, and then maybe we'll use the telemedicine model.
I've got good news and bad news.
Okay.
The news is, population is coming?
Yes.
Bad news is.
Population is coming.
Population is coming.
Yes.
Um, you know, I was at lunch today with, uh, some folk from Caldwell Bankers Realty, and I said that, you know, I, I thought our, I really, I'm, uh, I apologize. I thought our housing inventory was adequate. They told me it's woefully inadequate, I guess. You know, they've been, yeah. So, uh, my gosh, where would you put them, you know? So, but, so they're steadily coming, steadily coming, which is a good thing.
That's right.
That's always a challenge for us. I was telling a group today, I was talking to a gentleman from, um, the Charleston area, prospective developer, and he was saying, you know, um, with his, uh, travels, and he kind of assessed Liberty County, and he said he gives us five years to kind of get it together to, to where we need to be for the growth that's coming here. We have a lot of good things going on, but we need the infrastructure, all those things, safety, healthcare, all those things to, to, to make it work.
Well, when you, when you recruit and you have to take call and you have to respond within thirty minutes, you can't live that far, that far away. That's, that's why we then have the call room or we have physicians every day in hotel rooms. That's, that's not really the family life that people, you know, are, are setting up. Our last recruit, we had the doctor, but when the spouse came back from the Realtor, and we had dinner that night, he was, he was sold. We had him. And then he called the next day and said, m- my wife couldn't find anywhere to live.
How's the market really challenging? The immediate mess of their building, is that a, is that our competition?
Um.
Another one's on the way, I heard.
Yeah, yeah. Our market's very, very favorable. Our market's very, very, um, favorable because of the payer mix. We're not like other rural hospitals with, um, the poor, uh, payer mixes. We still have a reasonable, um, commercial payer, uh, which is a good thing, which is a good thing. And that's why we continue to, um, develop programs. So, you know, we, um, we don't, um, need to have those that come up and cherry pick, and they only want those that have pay and cash. Um, and then, you know, we end up just taking care of all indigent, um, because we definitely have our, our share. But, um, you know, ours, we're, we're looking, uh, today. Um, there is a trauma report, and I actually sent it to Joey. It's a, like a thirty-eight page document, I think, Joey. And, but there is a huge, huge section of trauma in the rural areas as well. And their concern of, um, you know, there's a list of hospitals that, um, might not, um, survive the pandemic. And if they potentially close, then how far are they gonna have to go for services? And then, um, you know, they're short-staffed of, um, you know, EMS and trying to get, you know, people transferred. And once they do get them transferred, then there's wall time for them. And so there's different models that people are looking at of how do we take care of, you know, the communities that we serve, you know, for this? So, um, I, I don't, you know, we're, we're looking at a level four trauma designation mainly because, um, of the overall volume that we have. And then there's grant funds that we can get education for our staff. Because whether we want it or not, we have wrecks here. We have, we have some bad wrecks. So we might not be a trauma center, but we're certainly getting them and having to take care of them and stabilize them, and then hope and pray that we can get them, you know, to the level that they do need. But we, we have, um, you know, our last accreditation that came in in January. But we, we have, you know, our last accreditation that came in in January. She said, "We work at the highest scope of level that she's ever seen of any critical access hospital." And so we take care of everything possible that we have the capability for. And that's what we feel like is our service, you know, to the community. However, there's always gonna be things that the rules and regulations don't allow us to take care of, that we're gonna have to then seek, you know, for the higher level of care. But I'm not sure the immediate care, you know, immediate meds, that, you know, we need people to develop the relationship with their physician and then continue that follow-up. That one-time visit is not helping people stay on their diabetic medicine and staying on their cardiac medicine and preventing those strokes and preventing those heart attacks. That one time, I've got this, thank you for my quick fix. We need that doctor relationship for the preventative.
That too, I guess. Something we heard yesterday in the zoning workshop was about having a walkable, having walkable communities. And how it fits into your wellness. Green space, all those things. So as we get ready for our Fall County Planning Workshop, let's all take those thoughts, you know.
Sidewalks help.
To that process.
That's right.
Something we heard about too, the ACCG was, and Joey mentioned it, crisis, they have crisis team, was it Douglas?
There's several around the state for the mental health crisis team.
For the mental health. They did, but she did say it took about ten years for it to come together.
Right.
You know, government doesn't move fast.
Right.
But we all started thinking about that, those models though, to put together those crisis team to help with our behavioral health.
We just had our Center for Rural Health meeting in Macon, probably two weeks ago. And there's, the trauma commission came together to say, you know, um, there's a new designation, which we would not do it because we have too much volume. But some hospitals that don't have a large inpatient volume, they can have emergency room designation where they have just emergency rooms, but they no longer have inpatient care. Well, then that means they won't be able to accept inpatients, so they're gonna transfer them to other hospitals. So that's gonna make more need of an EMS because they're not gonna be designated to take those, you know, kind of patients. So the overall bed need is going to increase as the population increases, that then increases. And so it might come down the road that we look at our type of designation as being a critical access and say, does that still fit the need of the community? It might be that we're at a point where the needs are different and we might have to change. And so we've got that on our strategic item to discuss with the hospital authority of, you know, when that timeframe is.
Now, last thing, I read something, I heard on TV, you know, you talked about the memorial concept for Bryan County. Did I not hear that St. Joe's County is also looking at expanding into Bryan County?
Um, they have a, in Hartwood, so they have a joint relationship with that developer to put, um, almost a mini facility in that neighborhood of ten thousand homes, ten thousand homes.
So do we view that the same as we view the memorial?
Yes, it'll definitely be some competition. Mm-hmm. Because the majority of that area that comes, you know, our clinic is just one exit away. So that's much easier to come to our midway clinic and then come, you know, to the hospital than to go one forty-four, seventeen, two oh four, God help you on Appicorn. So.
Signage, Ms. Ms. on ninety-five yet that says that's a facility?
You can't put it up for the clinic. You have a hospital signage is what you're allowed. But we do try to market those areas and then participate in those areas to get the word out. And so it's been very favorable. And actually, our nurse practitioner actually came from that county and brought a lot of her patients with her.
So your model that you're talking about, let's just, I mean, if we're looking ten years down the road and you make the decision, this is what we need, can we, can we go up with what's out there now? Or do we need to go back? Or do we need to be looking for another place?
Um, I, I think the organizational have to decide, do we remain a critical access hospital? Or do we see so much of the, um, prospective payment system? It's called PPS Hospital. Then you're not limited on your length of stay, you're not limited on the types of cases that you take. And you're not limited on your number of beds. Today, we're limited with twenty-five beds and delivering babies. We save some for our moms. We don't count the nursery. But, you know, most of the time we have one or two beds left. That doesn't leave us a lot of room for growth. If that then is determined to change the model of the hospital, then we would be able to go up on the hospital and add a third floor. Um, we have where if we did a behavioral health unit, I would attach it to the hospital. So we would not have to duplicate laundry and dietary. Um, and you would have a lockdown unit and we have space for that on the grounds already. But I would go up and do a third floor. Um, and that would increase our capabilities. And then we'd potentially look at, you know, that other end of the county to, if the numbers continue to grow. We need, we need a full-time provider because Dr. Procure is three days a week and we ought to put a full-time provider out there as well.
It's just two now, correct? Two stories?
Yes, sir.
With the delivery up top?
That and med surge, yes, sir. Mm-hmm, on the second story.
And the piece of property across the road, the car teepees, is that, does that belong to the hospital? Or is that from what, you know, you hear, it could have been Magnolia Manor's piece of property there for another assisted living?
Um, that, the across the street is not our property. And it's my understanding that they own that property and that they have identified plans to relocate their nursing home to that area in the future.
So with that, they'll have their own positions and everything, nurses at that building? You don't think they would be using the Liberty County facility there?
I would hope if a nursing home located across the hospital's campus, they would use our lab. And then if their residents became sick, that they would use, you know, our facility. I think it would be confusing to the public because our nursing home is located in Ludawissy. And some people might think that's associated with us. So I'm not quite sure, you know, how that'll end up in the future. But I would, I would hope they would use the local services. We don't see much of it today.
Well, I'll close with this, you know, we spoke earlier, the city of Hinesville is about to capacity when it comes to room subdivision, so it's gonna push the growth out. And of course, some is going to Long County, I know that about it. Some is going toward your midway clinic too, so.
Right. That's where we've, we've got, you know, as soon as we can get some of these nurse practitioners and keep them local, they've been in our system, then they're kind of already established here. You know, I was looking the other day, if you look at, you know, we have employees that drive Baxley, Glenville, Jess Savant, I mean, you know, from, from all over to attract the talent, you know, that is needed. And it's fortunate that we're able to do that. We had our service awards just recently and, you know, we recognized Donald of forty-five years, wasn't it, Mr. Lovett? And then recently, we had radiologist tech for thirty years. You know, a lot of organizations don't see that. And we're fortunate, we've got some longevity there and the talent that we have. So we'll continue to recruit and do a great job that we do and continue to expand as the population continues to expand.
We're getting together.
Sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Hey, Derek. Thank you all for coming. Summer food beers, Mr. Floyd.
Go ahead and prove it.
Thank you for your patience, David.
We did work with, I worked with County Administrator Joseph Mosley to advertise and promote the bid for the summer food program. The county received two bids, one from J.L. Stidham Group, LLC, for eight fifty per meal. And one from Coastal Georgia CAA at five dollars per meal. Both those bids were pretty, were a little bit higher than we were expecting them to be, to be perfectly honest. But we met, I met with Joey and Joseph to review the bids. And at their recommendation, I reached out to Coastal Georgia CAA to try to negotiate a lower cost per meal. I'm happy to report that Coastal Georgia CAA has agreed to reduce their meal, their per meal cost to four twenty-five per meal. Right now, we are looking at a thirty-eight days of service, serving about five hundred meals per day at four hundred, four twenty-five a meal. So we're looking at a cost of about eighty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for food. And that is just for paying for the food from Coastal Georgia CAA. We're also looking at an estimate of about thirty thousand for personnel and related costs to run the program.
So what was your anticipated cost before you got the bids in?
Reimbursement rate was like four forty-seven, I mean, like both our bids were above anything that we could even ask for for grant. You know, I mean, so, I mean, but I mean, that's just because the feds have not looked at, I mean, food is costing this much. I mean, that's, we actually reached out to America's Second Harvest and a couple of the other, you know, summer food site providers. And I mean, and they're all, everybody's losing money this year because of the federal reimbursement rate. They just did not increase it as inflation went up on food costs.
Federal reimbursement rate does not cover the personnel costs, it just covers the food.
So to the, to the short take, we think our out-of-pocket at the end of the day will be about fifty?
No, well, based on previous years, I think realistically, our reimbursement for this program from the federal grant will probably be around fifty thousand dollars, which is gonna be, I mean, that's, we're not paying for half of it. I mean, the other half is coming out of.
That's about sixty.
Yeah, about sixty thousand dollars. I think that the county is gonna pay for this program. I mean, which, you know, I mean, fifty thousand dollars isn't nothing, but like, you know, we're grateful that they're supporting it and all of it.
This is a service project.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
And I'm just glad to see this, this project back up and running, you know, since, you know, we had to shut it down since COVID. With it being back online is, you know, I'm just thinking about all the families that we're gonna be able to, to help during this difficult time. Because it's like you said, food price is going up, you know, if it's going up for us, it's going up for, you know, the individual families as well. And it's a tough time for everyone right now, so.
Let me say this to you. The last three years, Mr. Brown, correct me if I'm wrong, we didn't, Coastal Georgia, we didn't really have a place to prepare the food also. So after we was able to build a new facility in Riceboro, that allowed Coastal Georgia to be able to become competition again and.
Yes, sir. Honestly, I think this is the first time in my tenure that the food will actually be prepared in Liberty, I mean, in Liberty County. Because we, for a little while, they were preparing it at Jordy Bacon for our first couple of years. But for the last few years, they've been driving that food in from Brunswick.
No, we did do it a couple of years at Riceboro. When we was at Riceboro, we did it a couple of years at Riceboro.
Mm-hmm. But, I mean, honestly, I do think that that's gonna be, that'll help us out a lot. It's, I mean, as far as being able to get the food to the sites in a timely manner.
The total you're talking about, David?
Total for, that it's gonna cost the county or total overall?
The county.
Probably about sixty thousand dollars, sir.
How much?
Sixty thousand. I mean, the total price for the entire program, like food will be eighty thousand, seven hundred and fifty and then about another thirty thousand for the staff, the personnel at each site.
I think you, I mean, you'll be there a lot of times when they're delivered and you'll have people there working and you need to, I mean, you've got a certain number of meals that's out there. And there're gonna be other people that's gonna be there that want something to eat too. Now, I know that it's not gonna be every day, but whatever we got, keep up with it and get with Joey. And Joey will get you a check for whatever you got extra. I've seen that the county gets reimbursed.
Ms. Chairman, I did have one.
Joey will have money he can.
You know, honestly, I've always said, you know, we can, we can have, we generally have a little bit of extra food. We can bring it up here, people. Fridays, Friday's Peanut Butter and Jelly Sandwich Day. I think everybody loves it.
Bring it up here, we don't need it. I'm just saying, if you've got people there that you're trying to feed, then we're sure.
So we're always very careful that the food is useful, that we are, we are, like, there's a certain point at which we're not gonna get reimbursed because we, you know, and at that point, what we do is we're looking for communities in need that can make use.
Well, I've seen people ask from everything, from computers to roofs, through this budget that we've got. And if we can't spend just a little bit more money on some people that need some food to eat, then we're going away from home. So just put it in there, that's the way I see it.
Can you get, Ms. Chairman, can, David, can you get us a list of where you're gonna have these?
We'll probably have that, we're still, I told you earlier, we were doing fifteen sites. We're still sort of getting permission for some of the private sites. And I don't wanna publicize the list until I know for sure. But I can probably get that for you next week. I'll give it, send it to Joey for him to share.
Thank you.
Since, since we haven't had this project for a while, we had to decrease the amount of sites because we're, they're treating us like the new kids on the block. So we have to.
Get built back up?
Well, and honestly, there, because there's been, like, we're serving at Regency Apartments this time, which we haven't done that in years. I mean, there's always been so many food service companies were coming in, I mean, and all that stopped during the pandemic. Like, you know, people just stopped, you know, bringing food in. So we're actually gonna have a few sites that we, we haven't served at for a while. We're gonna be at Mount Zion, we're gonna be at Regency Park. And also, you know, we've got a new Boys and Girls Club that just opened right there at the old Jordy Bacon. So they're, they're starting their first camp this summer. We're gonna be serving there. So, I mean, we've got a lot of sort of exciting developments that are happening, but everybody's sort of in the same boat. We're starting out from a little bit of a limp because the pandemic slowed everybody's plans down a great deal.
Jason, don't forget the rural area now, yeah?
Yes, sir. We're still out there.
I think Jason's over at the city. Well, no, they're done with their meeting.
Yeah, they're done with their meetings. Well, and we're, we're still serving at the sites that we traditionally served out in Midway and at Riceboro. We're gonna be at Lake George Community Center. We've already got their approval for there. We're gonna, we're, I don't know yet about the first site in Baptist Church, but we've traditionally served there. And of course, we're gonna be in Homestown. Ms. Carolyn Smith's gonna be working out there again this year. We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna be at the Riceboro Youth Center. So we're, we're very, we're conscious that we're gonna try to spread it throughout the community.
On the rest end.
On the other, I will get you that list, I promise. Let's see, but yes.
Don't forget the Gun Branch area.
We will not forget the Gun Branch area, yes.
Of the county also. And do you do any type of advertising? I know we had it out there one time, but nobody didn't know what they were doing at it. I think we had them at the ballpark.
Yeah.
They were just sitting in their car with the box on the trunk. So, you know.
What we found is.
We got to do better in advertising to let people know that what we're doing.
What we found is it's a lot easier to bring food to where kids are than to try to get kids to go someplace to, you know, I mean.
And I know out there is, the density's not there, really. It's not. If you get past the city of Gun Branch, the density's not there. So I understand that if you can't find anything past there. But I believe on the Airport Road, Fifteenth Street, somewhere in there, we should be able to.
Oh, and there's been so much development down the Airport Road. I actually think that we could probably find a site.
Okay.
Do you have a scientist say summer food program here, something like that?
Yes, we have a summer food program serving eleven to one that we'll put outside of every site that we're, you know, or, you know, free, free lunch.
Social media too. I know, have a flyer or whatnot.
Well, we'll put out a flyer and we'll give one to the county to put out. But I've, I mean, that's not where most eyes are gonna go, to be honest, you know? So we're gonna push it out pretty hard on sort of the nonprofit social media and try. You know, so, we're gonna push it out pretty hard on sort of the nonprofit social media and try to get the, we, we actually talked pretty, we think that we're gonna get a really strong push from the Ministerial Alliance this year too, so.
Okay, sounds like you're touching on your basis.
Well, and it, it has been a little bit more of a challenge this year just because we're sort of having to rebuild a lot of stuff that really, you know, it, it's easier to keep stuff going when you do it every year.
Let's all take a part and happen to get the word out to your respective district.
We need to vote on this right here, Joey.
We need to approve the contract.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Moses, whoever. You're welcome, sir. Thank you.
City of Riceboro reelection?
Yes, sir, this is a standard ball play for us to, for our elections division to conduct the City of Riceboro election. I think we got one more that'll come to us also from our member, but it is the standard that you approved, just like the City of Heinzville, I believe it was, last time we were here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd offer me a motion.
Second.
Mr. Second, we approve the agreement to the election for City of Heinzville, any further discussion? All in favor, put your hands please.
They gotta have it.
That time of year.
Food truck, food truck, burn up hamburgers.
How you gonna get the food this year?
Mr. Chairman, the board of commissioners, one of the actions that came out of the retreat was to move forward with a food truck ordinance. We took the city of Heinzville and used it as a model ordinance. I keep forgetting Mike. Um, definitions, those, just a quick overview of the ordinance. Definitions talks about base operations, a food truck park, which is a gathering where food trucks come together and mobile home food establishment, which is basically the truck itself, and the push cart, which is the device you see people use on the streets. And then it's, section B starts talking about the license and approval that it need, require a business license, gotta have permits from Department of Health, must have a base of operations. And one of the things that we did with Jeff with the new zoning districts is we make sure we looked at the zoning districts that we have now, compare them to what y'all will be adopting in the future.
All right, just one quick question.
Yes, sir.
So, whenever you're saying you must have a base of operations, is that therefore they need to have either a ghost kitchen or do they need to have a restaurant establishment?
It, it's, it's a place where food is prepared, supplies are gathered, could be at a, those particular zones could be in a single-family home or wherever, but it's, it's where they, they prepare stuff.
So, it can be in a, okay.
Yeah, right, and the zoning districts lays it out, the different zoning districts where the base operation can be.
Better known, they call it a commissary.
Yes, sir, that's the term that they use in the.
That's what they used to call them, now they call them ghost kitchens.
That's, commissaries talk about the requirements and the standards. Basically, on the food truck, the truck, the vehicle is what they call the food store establishment, gotta have a license that will go through the building license department, outlines the personal information that they'll need for the application, must have proof of valid driver license, gotta have a copy of business license and gotta have all of the Department of Public Health's, all the certifications and permits. Operation standards for the mobile, it outlines where does operate, whether it's in a public area, private area, the particular zoning districts, parking when it's not in use, where it needs to be parked when it's not in use, display when it's, operations gotta have the permits, gotta be in a visible location where, where somebody come up can see them, get evidence of a valid driver's license and gotta observe a number of safety standards that the ordinance lays out. The parks gotta be located in applicable zoning districts that you see, gotta address environment issues, gotta be so many feet from places where employees can go to the toilets, restroom facilities, gotta submit a site plan that the LCPC must review and approve, gotta address issues like trash disposal, fire safety issues and how to deal with generation, generators and then the ordinance lays out enforcement guidelines, yes, sir?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Moses, on each of those established, I mean, move about, do they have to be inspected each time?
Uh, I do know that they got to follow through on the Health Department, that's, that's probably a year, but I, I read a little bit more carefully in there.
What about, what about fire safety and, you know?
On the, on the mobile ones, I'm not sure, but, but when you have the park, that's, that's part of the issue in the parks, when they started coming together and creating a park.
I think that's part of what Department of Health checks for.
Yeah, they, they had a health department.
Cannot believe it's a year, an annual.
But then you got the fire side too, and so, and, and the grounding side for building apartment.
These parks are where there, there'll be more than one gathered.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
They're gonna be over here, so if we have, if you have something, Salters Park, and you got five of them out there, that would be a park. But individually, they, they could go into.
The applicable zoning districts.
One could go into Salters Park and these wouldn't apply to him. The parks, it would go back to that other one.
Right, go back to, on the, the mobile.
Right, that's right, okay, but, yeah, so if you have a festival and you have a park, then they go by those guidelines.
Yes, ma'am.
And then generators can get loud, you know.
Have to have the quiet generators.
And the covenants outside from it, gotta make sure it's going out right.
So, what we wanna do is, if you got any comments, send them to me and we're gonna, when we send it to Kelly to dress it up, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure it's forwarded to him and we'll get it to him.
This is the way of the future, I tell you.
Any major differences between this one and Heinzville's?
No, sir, this, we went in, changed the zoning, make sure they were applicable.
That's good, all right.
Thank you so much, sir.
That's more than what we had.
So, when we, commissioners, when will we try to finalize this?
Get the muffler on that truck.
At the. You wanna do the first?
Approval for this?
Yes, ma'am.
Next meeting?
I don't think we'll be ready, we, we, we've gotta basically go back through it. If you can offer any comments before the next meeting, we still need to send this to Kelly. Kelly hasn't reviewed it yet, yeah, there's some things that are.
What our deadline should be, at least in two, no, what I'm saying is with the comments, with us, we should be able to have that back to you, what in?
June first.
June first, and then we should approve it.
And then, we still gotta send it to Kelly and, right, so it won't be ready for us to.
July first is probably a good date to look.
That's fine.
I'm thinking if it parallels Heinzville, then it should have been vetted by their city attorney.
Well, different, for instance, in here, it notes violations for first, second, and third offense. None of that will apply in here because it'll be kicked, our, our method different from the cities, it'll go to magistrate court, it's the only thing available. And so, it'll be OCGA code remedy allowable to the magistrate court. So, for instance, that's, there'll be some changes between the city and the county, we haven't sent it over to Kelly yet.
Well, should it be ready before the first meeting in July, just let us know?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Should we just add to Joseph our, some of the questions?
Absolutely, questions, concerns, doesn't have to be exactly like it, whatever you, whatever you prefer.
I just want it to be fair for everybody.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Everybody is by, by the same rules, so.
I think it's like.
Don't get off, I don't go park at the corner of Love it and Fifth Street.
Man, that's a cool street right there, baby.
It's like the other thing y'all were talking about too, the consistency's important, just like unified development order. So, you know, you, you got a food truck operating in a county, if you can be as close as you can to the other municipalities, eliminates that confusion. You know, that, that'll be the best thing to do.
Good start, good start.
Just very quickly, and, and I won't take long here, can certainly answer any questions tonight or later, go ahead, Michael. The, the first thing, just to give you a quick date, a quick update on legislative assembly, obviously adjourned many, many bills out there. ACCG did a good job of recapping the highlight bills that's on their website, if you go to that legislation. Just a few that we were tracking, the truck weight limit did pass, took vehicles allowable for certain agricultural products and timber from about eighty-four thousand gross weight on the truck to eighty-eight thousand, so it increased about four thousand pounds on that. Legal organ requirements made a little easier on us sometimes, especially with a once-a-week newspaper that, you know, everybody makes mistakes. So, we'll send over an ad that's gotta run for budget or mileage, it's very time-sensitive. If the ad's not exactly right when it runs, it does allow them to repost it on their website within two days and meet the compliance of the law. And we'll obviously advertise it on ours, so it gave us a little bit more flexibility under the advertising requirements and legal orders. It did put back in, House Bill thirty-one put back into place something that we'll be able to take advantage of. We're still monitoring the closed landfill, so we do remediation efforts on that. There's been in place for, gosh, I know at least ten years, if not more, hazardous waste trust fund that people pay into when they dispose of tires and do other things, that money had been diverted into the state treasury for other purposes, just put that back into place and said it's gonna go in that fund for what it's meant for. And so, that's pretty good, estimated to generate about one point four million dollars a year. We would make application for that for some of our remediation efforts, which is very good. Also, Senate Bill fifty-six dealt with the taxation of digital goods, you know, Amazon sales and all those things were put in several years ago, I think that's why we've seen a tremendous increase in the sales tax personally, along with some growth here, of course, but of that, this expanded that further to, I'm gonna call it digital media. So, it's like books and music, it's anything that you buy online that you retain permanently. If you rent it or lease it online, it's not applicable, but if you download it as a permanent buy, books are a perfect example, then that's gonna be a taxable sale, so anything that you buy digitally and retain is gonna be taxable.
July one kind of?
July one.
No, I'm just thinking about from, even from like the Playstation and stuff.
Exactly, exactly, same thing.
Because I'm, I'm getting alerts right now that my son is downloading the new game, right? I'm just glad, you know, some of those will come to Liberty County.
House Bill three eleven gave the commission the ability to offer some relief of permits and taxes in areas that were disaster-declared areas. So, if you have a large-scale, Lord, we never have that happen, but if you have a large-scale disaster, wipes out a bunch of stuff, it would give you the right to give some relief, not have to, to those folks affected by that disaster. And then the homeowner tax relief grant was put back into place. Now, basically, what that will do, and that's an old, old act that was out there that was resurrected, but it will give homeowners tax relief, provides a tax credit of up to eighteen thousand dollars to them on their assessed value of their homesteaded properties for this year, this coming year, it has to be renewed from year to year. So, so, you know, that is good for homeowners to know, along with anything else that, you know, might come along that affects their, their homeowner rate, but could see an average reduction of about five hundred dollars on property tax bills.
Is that something we?
Which could be great.
How would we explain that to a homeowner? They need to come up here and fill out a form or is that automatically?
They're automatically, if they own a homestead and they're filing for homestead exemption, they'll automatically get that credit.
That's something that would take place downstairs or?
Well, yes, ma'am, I, you know, the, the exact schematics, I don't, I don't think, and I'll reconfirm this for everybody, especially those that are on, on Facebook too, but I don't think there's anything you've got to do.
Anything that we need to do.
I think it's gonna be an automatic credit if you're already signed up as a homesteaded property.
If you're already signed up.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, just capital projects real quick, just an update on that, I won't go through them all, a couple of pictures, but EMS facility, anticipated completion date, really next month on that. Down there today, you'll see that in the section, Miller Fire Station, completion date right now estimated at, at, in September. Trent has run over some of these, we'll tell you that Mr. Buckley is actively involved now with design of the Health Department facility and has got what he needs to work on there. Sam Harris Gym renovations, some of y'all have been through there, completion date on that's looking good at, at August right now. You see the status of some road projects on there, we'll talk about the connector in a second and the status of those other projects. And I'll show you a couple of pictures, be happy to answer any questions you got. This is a snapshot just of today, the work continues on the gym, they basically have got it acclimated in there. They'll start installing the air conditioning systems next week. Georgia Power projected to be in there, also installing their transformer next week, which has got to be obviously put in before the AC systems can get in. EMS station two, they've already started moving furniture into that, we'll out, we'll go for a, what I call a power check or a power up on that. In fact, next week, test all the systems on it, and as Trent mentioned. I'm good, so the roadway out front is finished, that did take a while to be able to get completed, but Trent mentioned that also, so we got that done, okay.
He mentioned, he mentioned it, but you got.
I think we got fire station in there also.
Joey.
Yes, sir.
On that fire station, just curiosity, and the EMS station, will we have any kind of caution light out there or we won't?
Not at this time, you know, there's the road plan, in fact, on one of the projects, I think it's dead, buddy, there, on, on the projects that, two million dollars, I believe, was the cost of doing the Highway eighty-four retrofit out front that we didn't have funding for. I've kept it on my project list, but it shows no action at this time until we establish either some state funding, really probably gonna have to be our funding on that. Fire station, just a quick snapshot of that. Wall provide, wall dividers, everything obviously in place, they should finish up the work on the outside of that station probably in the next couple of weeks, weather provided, and like I say, the work continues on the inside, they're doing very, very well there. No delays that we see in materials on that. I do wanna mention, okay, now we'll switch over while we're talking about capital projects. Do wanna get your permission to do this, if you blow that up, Michael. What, what you're seeing here that we're moving out on from the planning session that you had is, is a layout. This is off of South Main extension on the property that, that we just got from the hospital through that EMS transfer to orient you, just north of this is where the current station is. So, this is that long, open lot, really behind Kroger in there. So, Mr. McCall's done some layout of that, and now we can go to the next one, Michael. Yeah, and if we can, well, it's gonna be hard to blow it up, but, but basically, it's simple building, truck supply loading on the rear, small training classroom in the back, you know, toilet facility, storage facilities, administrative, small administrative area for Becky to work out of to take payments and process and do things like that. And then offices, two joint offices for shift supervisors in there currently have nowhere to do their paperwork and then Gene and Crystal an office up front. So, you know, not an overly large facility, in fact, fifty-nine hundred square feet is what you're talking about in there. Be a pre-engineered metal structure with, with brick facade on the front to match, to match that. Anticipated cost of that, everything in that, including permits and fees, is right around two million dollars for that, asphalt paving and everything in that. These are the, basically, the, a rough design, it's been run by Crystal, run by Gene, and they feel pretty good with it. I feel pretty good with it, spent a, spent a time on the phone with Rusty today talking about that. We're gonna apply for a grant for a generator to go on that station, as well as one for the EMA facility when we look at that. But like to see if I can get your permission to go ahead and get him to do the construction drawings on that to get started based on these schematics.
See, Crystal and Gene, they, they blessed it?
Yes, sir.
You blessed it?
We get those construction drawings. This is one of the items that you boasted for in Splosh Seven to do that. Right now, and, and I won't be redundant about things that we've said earlier, but right now, they really don't have much office space at that current facility at all, Becky's trying to operate with two other people upstairs to do the billing, I mean, it's really, really not, they need this, they don't have any room for supplies, I mean, they're storing them in the attic basically a lot of times. The training, they don't have any, anywhere to do their training and their CPR training updates and things like that.
I don't have no problem with the, the design or anything like that, I just wonder with the way that the county's going, we jammed up there on South Main. I'm just saying, there's no other place that you feel like, I mean, that would be better outlined somewhere? I mean, we're, I just.
It needs to be in the city, because that's where our main station, main call volume and main load's gonna be and, and. and main load's gonna be, and, and, um.
Well, that's where it's gonna leave from, but I mean.
Yeah, yeah, and, and it needs to be close to that, and I need the administrative facility to be close to the operational facility. And, and I'll be honest with you, i- if I can, they're operating, Gene and Crystal shared an office supervisor trying to work, it, it, they will have, uh, about two office areas, there'll be a little bit of room for expansion in that current building later on if it needs to, I don't know why it would, the operational quarters, 'cause you can put four ambulances in there now, um, I think if anything happens in the future, you might look for a place to put more ambulances and more crew, but not necessarily administration.
And how many you gonna have in Midway?
Or a room for four, won't be funded initially, but a room for four.
Uh, I mean, you're adding how many new buildings at Tradeport, and that's how many more employees with, in a, you know, industrial top setting, I'm just wondering what.
Yeah, I, I mean, you're.
I mean, you wanna try to make sure it's at the, at the right place, I don't know, I mean, I have no idea, I'm just thinking that it would fine, because that's the only place we had EMS at one time, you know, right there in the, at the trailer, and, and we realized that we needed a trailer with some folks in it down in Midway, so.
Right.
We moved, so I just wanna make sure that, you know, you, you're in the right spot.
I really think we are here, or I think you're here, I, I think it's the right spot for your administrative people, I do.
Okay.
And I think you're gonna, again, I think you'll need to either look at adding some space, depending on what the calls do over the next ten years, adding space here for more ambulance crews, more so in other areas probably, yeah, but obviously the first thing is to try to get two full crews down at Midway, 'cause the call volumes is happening down there, and, and another, probably another substation down there. But that's what I come before you tonight with.
Move with it, we've got, we've allocated the money for it, and if they're okay with the design, then you're okay with it.
I wish that we'd have been able to, got the city to go with us on part of this. I mean, they just moved out of one fire station and another one, that would have been perfect, straight across from where they're at.
They're gonna.
Nine oh one, I mean, I don't know, I just.
Down, yeah.
And you said the, the front facade's gonna match the current EMS building?
Uh, well, you know, the current EMS building is vinyl and brick, but it would, yes, sir, yes, but we wouldn't put brick all the way around it, there's no need to, really.
All right.
We'll get a draft, then, we'll go ahead and engage to get the construction drawings done, and once we get those, we'll have those available for y'all to look at on the back before we ever do anything bidding the project, so still be time to sit down there, look at it, or answer any questions you got, in our normal process of these buildings. Okay?
Okay.
Um, there had been some discussion, I know, Ms. Chairman, you had a conflict, um, that we talked about the other day, and that was the possibility of being able then to move our, uh, June fifteenth meeting date to possibly June thirteenth, which would put it on a, actually, that Tuesday instead of that Thursday, that's the mid-month in June, I think there's Savannah Tech graduation that night, some things, I just, I defer to you, um, on what, how you wanna handle that, but.
If, if the commission, uh, could allow us to change that meeting to the thirteenth, mid-month?
Ms. Chair, actu- actually.
That's a good time for me, excuse me.
Right, no, no problem, but I, I know earlier this year, at our, uh, county commission, uh, workshop, we discussed about possibly even looking at making those changes permanently, and I don't see why not use this opportunity now to go ahead and, and look at doing that permanently. And just be simple, Tuesday and Tuesday, same time, same place.
Well, let's, um, let's test this one out.
Obviously it's gonna work, I don't know what we tested.
Ms. Chairman, while we're looking at that, if that's, okay, on our July fourth meeting.
That work for you?
Need to look at July.
June, June.
June thirtieth.
Well, I'll go with you on this one, right here, Ms. Chairman, just don't ever let it happen again.
You're kind.
This, this is what's.
Well, you're right, July fourth is the, um.
Yes, sir, I'll be out that whole week.
So.
I can do the eleventh.
What, how have we done that before, have we moved it?
We've always moved July fourth.
We have, when it fell on Tuesday.
Normally, we move it back like the, the next week or whatever, but either way, I, I just, I just wish we'd just go ahead and have a Tuesday and Tuesday meeting, five and five, or six and six.
I like it the way it is, myself.
I know, I know.
I mean, that's just me.
I know, some people get stuck, some people get stuck in their ways, man.
I'm stuck in the rut.
I'm telling you.
I come with the bill.
Is that good?
Hey, church start at eleven o'clock every Sunday, right? How about Bible study?
But when is Deana, is Deana?
So, uh, June fifteenth, we'll move to June third, we'll send a notice out there to everybody, and then, uh, July fourth will move to Ju- July eleventh.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Sure. Ms. Chairman, I believe that's, I wanna go back, Michael, one quick time to, um, to the thirty-eight project, if you will, just to give you a quick update on that, the thirty-eight bypass project, I apologize, um, that, just to tell you that construction has a project let date of August of twenty-three, uh, there are a couple of things, right away is already being completed, you see the updated construction cost as of April, it's gone up, the state's paying a hundred percent of the construction cost, they paid a hundred percent of the right away cost, uh, we're searching for some funding sources for the utilities and mitigation funds, and that's what we put the earmark money in for, that has made it fast, passed the first round in those congressional hoops, so we won't know about that until October, reason I tell you that is there's a pretty good chance that that project let date gets bumped back some, and I'll be in conversation with the district engineer, uh, hopefully by Monday, to be able to talk to him about that, but that is the current status on that project. So it's, it's, it's about ready to, to go out for bid, provided we can get the other items covered, and that's all I have, sir.
Items, let me get this commission. I don't know, it sounds negative, but, but if the funding doesn't come through.
Well, if funding doesn't come through, then, you know, district engineer will have the conversation, I mean, there, there's some options, I think, to, uh, request the state of Georgia that we change a project framework agreement to let them be the project sponsor, which would mean it would be let when they decided they had the funds to do that project, obviously, there's some triggers in there because of mitigation, a couple things, mitigation credits that have to be bought are gonna go up in price as each month rolls on, uh, pretty substantially, the other side of that is, is that mitigation, if it's not bought and the project doesn't start within a three-year period from when the studies were done, uh, you have to go back and update that again, which takes about twenty-four months to do, so, yeah, we'll, we'll discuss, I'm gonna discuss that with him next week.
About five o'clock is ticking.
Well, we've been waiting twenty years, Joey.
And by then, we'll probably have our meetings on Tuesday and Tuesday.
And then we go ahead and.
Anything else, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, everybody, good meeting, productive.
I'm with the chair.
Is that good?